Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Zizmarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Police.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join the Pledge of Allegiance. And Peter, if you'd like to start.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Oh, first, sorry, I skipped. Need approval of minutes, October 6, 2016.
So move.
Questions, corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? That passes. Now, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I have no written communiquee. We will start with the Eagle Scout for Peter Weideman, if you would like to come up. I'd like to introduce everyone here. Eagle Scout Peter R. Weideman. I'll read the proclamation, and well, you can tell us about your Eagles project and what was done in the community. And just so everyone knows, this is Troop 65. He is the 66th Eagle Scout for Troop 65.
Nice.
Eagle Scout Peter R. Weideman. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs which encourage the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others. Whereas one of the major objectives in the scouting program is to develop citizenship through community involvement, and in addition to working for citizenship, merit badges, scouts are encouraged to participate in community service projects. And whereas Peter R. Weideman is a member of the Boy Scouts of America and has not only proven himself to be an outstanding member, but has attained the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout life and will be a beacon to others of the leadership quality and commitment this young man has shown. Now therefore, I, Mayor Anunziato Police and the City Council of Wood Dale, recognize Peter R. Weideman as worthy of this highest honor and encourage him to continue his commitment to excellence. Congratulations. Now we'll let Peter say a few words and speak about his Eagle project.
What I've done for Wood Dale is, for my Eagle project, I made a butterfly garden at one of your businesses. And the butterfly garden used to be a former vegetable garden, well, garden. And I transformed it into, well, it turned into kind of like a home for weeds, so it did not look very nice. So I transformed that into a butterfly garden. So you can expect monarchs, you can expect a lot of other butterflies to be flowing into the city. I spent a lot of time on it, a lot of preparation, a lot of hours, a lot of thinking. So I think all that time was worth it. And so, yeah. I have also cleaned up highways on adopted highway. So your streets are much cleaner because of Troop 65. I have attended a whole lot of those, so I'm proud of that, that I could be such a positive influence to, in Wood Dale, to, you know, have done such a good job. So, yeah.
Thank you. Now I'd like to ask Chief Vesta to come up.
Thanks, Mayor. Peter, stay up there. Congratulations on your achievement. On behalf of the Police Department, we would like to present you with a certificate of achievement which says, having achieved the Boy Scout of America's highest award, the Eagle Scout, you hereby presented this recognition from the Wood Dale Police Department for your dedication to the Eagle Scout requirements for achievement. You have exhibited an interest, a loyalty, and a caring for your country, community, and your fellow man. Further, you are recognized for having dedicated yourself to the principles to attain this highest achievement, and in doing so have developed the necessary leadership skills which through example have set the pace for other young men to follow in your footsteps. We're confident that you will continue to apply these leadership skills and Eagle Scout principles to your life as you embark on new horizons embracing the morals and merits you have shown so far. We take pride in recognizing you for this outstanding achievement, and on behalf of the men and women of the Wood Dale Police Department, congratulations to you. Nice job.
Thanks.
Does you want to take a picture with them?
It's old-fashioned.
So high, old-fashioned.
Great job, isn't it?
Thanks so much.
Congratulations. Awesome family. Congrats. Congrats to you. People with their work. Powerful influence on young people in Wood Dale.
Great work. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job, parents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Charles Ford School.
That's great.
It's where I work, too.
Oh.
Next, Community Planning Month proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningful, involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorsed National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment. And whereas a celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Wood Dale, Illinois. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of Wood Dale, Illinois, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the month of October 2016 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in Wood Dale, Illinois in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Next, Electronics Recycling Event. The last one of the year at Addison Township Highway Department, 411 West Potter Street in Wood Dale, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. will be November 12. That is the last electronics recycling event. Also, there will be a Veterans Day breakfast held at Salt Creek Golf Course on Saturday, November 5, from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. All veterans and their families are invited to attend the event. After the breakfast, there will be a Veterans Day ceremony held at Wood Dale Veterans Memorial Park at 269 West Irving Park Road. The ceremony will begin at 11:00 a.m. In case of inclement weather, the 11 o'clock ceremony will be held at Salt Creek Golf Course, where the breakfast is being held. And thank you to Wood Dale Park District, and I task a bank for their sponsorship in this event. And that concludes my report. Next, Mr. Murmish, manager's report.
Just two quick items. Steph has reached out to iDOT, and we have received the update that they will be completed with the repaving of Irving Park Road throughout Wood Dale by Thanksgiving at the latest. And the intersection project at Wood Dale and Irving will be opened by November 18. That means all the construction barricades removed, all the striping will be in place, all the new lights will be up. You'll be able to turn left at Wood Dale and Irving to go west when you want. So everything will be complete by November 18. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And actually, regarding construction, at the Elsger O'Hare meeting this past Monday, they are saying Wood Dale Road at Thorndale over there should be open all four lanes come the end of next week, providing they stay on schedule. But they were thinking more like Monday, Tuesday, but they said, let's say, the end of the week, just in case. So that should help out the situation as well. Alderman Messina?
Let me just recap what I'm hearing before we tell some residents. I hear Wood Dale and Thorndale, or Wood Dale at Thorndale, all four lanes open.
At the end of October, resurfacing of Irving Park should be done by Thanksgiving, and then the intersection of Irving Park Road and Wood Dale Road by November 18.
That is correct.
Correct.
Providing-
Pretty aggressive schedule, but, okay, great.
That's what they're saying, so.
Good.
Consent agenda. If, any objections? Alderman Woods?
Number seven.
Item number seven. Any other objections? Okay, I entertain a motion to go forward with the six items on the consent agenda, one through six. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of final payment request to R.A. Mancini for the Mill Road Water Main Project in an amount not to exceed $95,539. Item number two, approval of change order number one for the Ward 2 Phase 3 with ALAM Concrete Contractors to extend the project until June 30, 2017. Item number three, a resolution seeking to approve a contract with the Robinson Engineering to provide a feasibility study for the South Wastewater Treatment Plant in an amount not to exceed $39,600. Item number four, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wood Dale and BWCSI for the VFD installation and integration at the Potter and Reichert Stations in an amount not to exceed $51,300. Item number five, a resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wood Dale and Burgland Construction of Chicago in a not-to-exceed amount of $45,000. Item number six, a resolution approving the final plat of subdivision to consolidate lots, property commonly known as 428 Noel Wood Drive. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports planning and zoning. Alderman Catalano.
Yes, I have one, Mayor. A resolution seeking to approve a contract between the City of Wood Dale and Tesco Associates, Inc., for the development of a comprehensive plan in the not-to-exceed in the amount of $125,000. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
What else I'm missing here, I probably am. What were the other companies that put in for it? What else I missed?
Mr. Cage, you want to take this one? I was going to try and do it off the top of my head, but go ahead.
Yes, there were four proposals that were submitted. The companies that submitted, Tesco and Associates, House Hill Levine Associates.
Wolf, R. Wolf?
Rolfe.
Rolfe.
Yes, that was the third one.
And Lakota.
Lakota was the fourth one. Lakota Group.
Anything further, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yeah, I have a follow-up.
Go ahead.
I have no problem. Do we do reference checks on them? Do we call their work that they have done somewhere else? Or do we just-
Mr. Cage.
-take their letters?
Yes, I haven't called any references because I've worked with these companies before, and the people I'm, they've given us references I talk to in a professional capacity anyway, so I'd be happy to follow up with that, but it's, we talk about this, we have talked about it informally.
Do you have a follow-up?
Mayor, the only thing I, I have no problem passing this, but I thought we talked about after they submit their thing that they go back and talk to the ref, some of these clients they work for. I mean, and the point is also, we also asked before that we would ask for a whole list of clients where we could call other towns and see what they work for. I have no problem proving this, but we were up here several years ago, and we didn't call references on the company. I forgot what, and we found out that they didn't do work somewhere else. I mean, they didn't lousy work. I mean, I don't have no problem proving this, but I thought we talked about this before, that we do call the references. Even though they gave us a notebook with all the references, but I really would like to see that done in the next contracts. Thank you.
Mr. Cage.
To respond to that, I've been recently at the Illinois APA Conference, and I've spoken to a number of the references that they have given us, the various consultants, one being the Village of Itasca. Obviously, I know those individuals, the staff people over there. So I have talked to the references. I didn't go through it in a formal process, but I did it informally because we're professional colleagues. So to answer your question, we did do that. I did that informally and checked those references.
Alderman Messina, you are next.
Could you confirm the timeframe for delivery of it? I think I read May, June, July of next year.
Mr. Cage.
Yes, so the typical length of a comprehensive plan is a one-year process from kickoff meeting, from inception to adoption. So the proposal is, obviously, if it's approved this evening, what we're looking at is a completion date of October 17.
Okay.
Do you have a follow-up?
Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
And obviously, between those, you know, between October 16 and October 17, obviously, there are going to be a number of meetings. It's all in the proposal, stakeholder meetings, public meetings. Really, the key of a comprehensive plan is that it's not one individual's ideas and concepts, it's the concepts and ideas of the city council, CDC, the businesses, the community. So a big portion of this project, in my mind, is reaching out to those individuals, you know, wherever they are, bringing them in through creative ways to get them into meetings, to get their input in. Because the comprehensive plan, I'm sure you know, the last comprehensive plan was drafted in 1997. We did a brief update in 2003, so it's long overdue. CMAP recommended this when they did their plan last year, that we update the comprehensive plan. And really, it's bringing the community together to kind of focus on what we want to see in the future. And I know we've talked about that on a number of projects, the downtown area, the Thorndale area, and the Tiff District. So we got a lot of good, really good information, a lot of good studies. We want to bring those together and get the community excited and get them involved in it.
Follow-up, go ahead.
So are we going to, I did read that they recommended it. I didn't know if that was part of our plan. So are we going to have like an open house workshop to invite residents to, then?
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
Yes, there will be, one of the things that I did like about this proposal that's under consideration this evening is that they will do, they will be doing, they have a communication plan, so they'll be reaching out a number of different ways. So it's not, it's not the typical kind of old-school way of just putting a notice in the newspaper and advertising those ways because you get the same group of people. So I think what they're going to be doing is going out into the community and actively pursuing, bringing people in. Because we want to hear a variety of different opinions. We want to get that creativity going. What do we want to see the City of Wood Dale looking like in five years, 10 years, 20 years from now? So what I liked about this proposal, they have a very aggressive plan to go out, contact businesses, residents, and bring them into these meetings, obviously have webpages, et cetera, to, you know, convey information, convey updates on the plan, and opportunities to get people's feedback in, so.
Cool. Thanks.
All right. Alderman Roy Wesley, you are next.
Go over something first.
Okay, Alderman Sorrentino, he concedes to you. Go ahead.
Being new, excuse me if this question's out of order, but-
No, no, go ahead.
-not far for me to do that. You had mentioned that this organization worked with the Village of Itasca as well?
Go ahead, Mr. Cage.
That was one of the other proposals. So we had four consultants submit proposals. One of the other consultants did do a comprehensive plan for, I believe, the Village of Itasca.
All right. So there's, my question was going to be if there was any need for a confidentiality statement if indeed there was work on both sides of the street.
Good. Mr. Brown.
Confidentiality between two communities.
No, I mean, if it's a matter of public record, they use that developer, and that's as a professional courtesy, that's typically done. There is no, there may be instances where there's some sensitivity to a particular project, and in that instance, there would be a confidentiality agreement. That's an unusual situation as opposed to the, you know, sharing of that information. And again, it's generally public information, just like the discussion here. So that would be appropriate for them to share that.
Thank you. Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
Mr. Cage, you said there was four proposals. I guess the question is to the manager, why, did I miss it? That we don't have the proposals, the prices or anything? Because we spent $125,000 tonight.
Mr. Murmish.
And I would like to, I'll let you answer that question.
Go ahead, Mr. Murmish.
It was put in quite a few packets. I can get it to you again if you'd like it.
Was there discussion at the committee?
We skipped committee because the council put a priority to get this done as soon as possible. We wanted to get it done so we can begin the outreach in time for the shape of Wood Dale as well. So we're trying to save time to get more public outreach.
Go ahead, do you have a follow-up, Alderman Wesley?
That's fine what you're saying, but I would still would like to, I would have liked to see more information. Maybe I missed, I probably did miss it, but was there four packets in there of every single company?
Mr. Murmish, go ahead.
Yeah, with their full proposals.
Okay, thank you.
It was, I think it was a Dropbox. They sent, go ahead.
I don't have a Dropbox. I only have this, you remember?
Oh, yeah, your iPad is not working correctly. All right. Next, no courier pigeons. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley.
Abstain.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health, thank you, Alderman Wesley. Public Works, Alderman Woods?
I have two reports, Mayor. One, a resolution seeking to approve a license agreement between the City of Wood Dale, Markel Investments LLC, for a non-exclusive license agreement for the use of Right-Away.
Is that your motion?
It is not my motion.
Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? Questions? Alderman Woods?
I have the same question I've been asking for a little while now. And that is, why couldn't we shadow in the buildings on the engineering drawings so that we had a better representation of what the parking would be like when the jobs completed, so there are no surprises? That doesn't seem like a hard task. I mean, I went out and tried to do it by hand, measuring it in the field based on the dimensions they gave me, and I get a difference of parking spaces and what I would, if I looked at the drawings given to me, I believe that there would be X amount of spaces, and when I go out and measure it, it's less than X amount of spaces. I would just like everybody to know what it is they're signing on for. I'm told it probably doesn't matter, but it does matter that everybody knows what they're agreeing to.
Mr. Murmish.
Yeah, the depiction you have included in your packets was formulated from, as you know, H.R. Green, who's the engineer on the project, in cooperation with the property owners and their attorneys. How they came up with the measurements, I do not know, but I can request that we put a, an amended version in there with a building outline. I can get that copy from them, if that's what you guys would like to see. I don't know, again, I wasn't at these meetings where they were doing their measurements.
Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I wasn't at the meetings either. I just, I would just like, if I'm going to agree to something and create this license agreement, and specifically because there's like two dozen other locations in the city that have a similar setup and could come before, so that we maintain some consistency of what we're doing with the properties and that we fully understand what we're, the agreement as we're entering into it as well as the property owners, understanding fully what it is they're getting into. That's my only concern. So if we could, if we could get that with the, shadowed in there so that we have that referenced as our document, I just think that covers everybody.
Okay. Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I think as the manager indicated, that can be done. That will be appended to the final version of it, so it'll be a matter of record and can be used for future agreements if the council's inclined to enter into such agreements.
Do we need a table right now?
No, you could just include it with there. It's already depicted, you just want it depicted clear.
Well, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Wood, Alderman Woods.
It's not depicted. I mean, somebody drew some red lines on here. So specifically, if I look at the red lines, I believe that I have five parking spaces. But if I, if my dimensions are correct after going out and measuring and adding the sidewalk and that, it's really three parking spaces. So that gets into, you know, what do the property owners understand they're getting? That's the big thing. I mean, I'm told it doesn't matter because we're going to do the project, right? We all want to move forward, I get it. I just want there to be no ill will or sour grapes when it's all said and done that they put the curbs in, and now the guy can't park any cars there. And as we address this situation in the city and other locations, possibly,
Sorry, you making a motion to table?
I would make a motion to table it.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Let's get a roll call.
Wait, table to what? Some questions, sorry.
Probably the next council meeting.
Right.
I'm sure it's H.R. Green can-
They, yeah, they shouldn't take that long to put that in there.
You, go ahead, roll call, please.
Can I ask a question?
We have a motion and a second. The table.
Anytime. Ready?
Roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman R. Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Okay, it's table.
So, next report is a resolution seeking to approve a license agreement between the City of Wooddale and Hindsight Holdings for a non-exclusive license agreement for use of city right-of-way.
I take it as the same thing.
I make a motion to table it.
Second.
Hold on. You got a motion?
Well, this one's a little different in that it's all city property. So this one actually is depicted, the spaces that are going to be there, unless somebody else has an issue.
Go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So it's in the same area. H.R. Green drew it up. We asked him to come back and put the buildings in there. I want to see the whole plan now. I mean, that's my recommendation, I'm not going to excuse me.
We have a motion and a second. Eugene, was the motion?
Roy, second.
Roll call.
That's the table. That's the table.
Table, yes.
Okay. Can I go?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
No.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Four to three, that passes.
Table.
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 That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Next, Finance Administration, Alderman Jacob.
No report, Mayor.
Under other business, we have item number seven from the consent agenda, undertake a motion to approve item number seven, an ordinance granting a special use for the operation of second-hand store at 238 East Irving Park Road, pin number zero-three dash fifteen dash one thirty-three dash zero-two-four in the City of Wooddale.
I'll make a motion.
I'm a second.
The mayor made the motion?
Who made the motion over there? Somebody was there first.
I made the motion.
Brandon.
Oh.
And Jean was second. Alderman Woods, you had a question on this one?
Yeah, just a couple quick questions. One was on the parking, that the, in order to get the special use, they had to add the parking. Parking was already part of the original PUD. Is that?
Mr. Cage, or Ms. Chrissy?
So when the original PUD was approved, there were two phases. So in phase one, they were supposed to construct a certain number of parking spaces, which they did not complete because they were starting to, they were anticipating working on phase two. And so one of the issues was that there is not sufficient parking for that initial component or phase one for what was approved in the original PUD, correct?
You have a follow-up, Alderman Woods?
And part of the reason I'm asking these questions now is because everything lately that comes before us is about parking. So that's why I can't express enough that we come up with some kind of consistent plan to address this for all businesses and be consistent across the board for everybody. So with that being said, how were we able to move the, didn't another tenant move in beforehand?
Ms. Chrissy?
They didn't.
Did you hear the question?
They didn't need the parking then?
Go ahead.
I'm trying to understand why the project wasn't completed sooner.
Currently, there's stockpiles of dirt in the location where their parking would have to be located because of the construction next door, which was originally phase two of this PUD. And so they do anticipate moving forward with putting that parking in. We have preliminarily approved the plan for their parking to make sure that they do meet the parking requirements. I can't speak to any prior business that went in there, as that was before my time, and so I'm not entirely sure what the justification was for allowing other businesses to locate there.
And then one quick question.
Go ahead, follow-up.
Kelly's up there. The next is, can, is the tenant able to move in before the parking's complete?
Ms. Chrissy?
Under the, well, that is a question. In the staff memo, staff recommended that a condition be placed to require the parking prior to the business operating. However, that was not a condition that the council put on the special use approval.
Right.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
I mean, I think the guy's in the process of putting it in, so I don't, if we were holding the guy back, I don't want to hold him back from moving in. That was my only, that's it.
Alderman Wesley, you had your hand up?
Not right now.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Just to add, just to add context to his business, it's mostly done online, so there is really no walk, pass or by traffic, so I don't think the parking should be something that holds them up for moving in. And there is an agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, with that original developer and the business owner, so that will be done. There is an agreement in place, from what I understand.
Ms. Chrissy?
I'm not sure I understand. So the business owner of the new business?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Yeah, that new development next door.
Correct.
Has an agreement with the building owner of that building where that new business will be.
I believe that is correct.
Okay, that's, okay. It's going to be done.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
When they built the first building, they didn't go all the way to their property line. So where that fence is now, where, what is it, Bright Oaks, Manor Care, what's the name?
Randall Homes.
Randall Residence. Their fence is on that guy's property. So that fence has to be moved over, and then they're going to build their parking lot. Does that?
Right, at one time it was one owner, and now it's only two owners.
Right, so when they were in the process of changing the properties over to the new owners, they never finished that parking lot because they were planning to move for phase two and three of the buildings, so.
Okay.
Right, Ms. Kelly?
Ms. Chrissy?
That's correct. That's my understanding.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Oh, go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley, under other business, you got something?
Yeah.
Go ahead, before I go to Alderman Jacob.
When we have businesses that have grand openings, why can't we announce it at the council here in saying, come to the grand opening of, like the grocery store in Georgetown? Because that would help, that would help residents at home too in saying, hey, there's a new business. Maybe I could go get a job there or something. And it promotes the other, it promotes that business too for that time.
Mr. Murmish, go ahead.
Are you volunteering to give that report? Give you the info, and you can give it?
No.
Some, I'll be honest, sometimes these come up within a week. We need, unless, you know, I've tried to push a couple back, they tell me, no, no, we want to have it this day.
Even if it's the following week, at least the residency is a new business, they will go to it, hopefully. And employment, they're probably looking for helpers. Everyone's looking for helpers.
Yeah, can I?
We'll try and do a better job with that. Murmish has made a note.
What do I think?
Go ahead.
NFL has breast cancer awareness. All pink, all Sunday, last week. Why can't the city put a pink ribbon on top of the, on the city hall or something to, for breast cancer awareness?
We'll be able to do that even easier once that clock tower goes up with the new lighted panels.
Well, I believe that.
But we could have did something this year, you're right.
Right. City of Wooddale goes pink. That's what I say for October. Well, we got the city manager going part pink.
All right.
Can I?
Alderman Messina, you had something on, related to?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I won't make my smart-ass comment, excuse me, smart aleck comment regarding the ribbon. But yes, I think that's a great idea. But back to the job postings, I know with some of the new businesses moving in, we, Jeff, I know I'd asked you about that, a lot of residents on our Facebook page have asked about just getting notices. So can we work with some of these businesses to have some of these, maybe host it on our website, if possible?
I think, Mr. Cage and Ms. Chrissy are working on something. I know we went to one business, they were talking about, and they were trying to work out some logistics. Ms. Chrissy, maybe you can?
Yeah. I posted two job openings at Amazon, and I know we got a ton of, ton of interest and a lot of requests to continue it, so.
Right. So a couple of things, we've been talking with a number of businesses in the community, and being able to hire locally is one of the concerns that has been expressed. So I've been working with Mr. Case on trying to figure out a way that we can utilize our website to have some community job postings. It's a little bit more complicated, unfortunately, as things tend to turn out that way. But then we've also talked about having perhaps some other events, perhaps partnering with Community College and maybe doing a career fair or some things like that. So we are in the process of evaluating some different options to try and get our local residents to be able to work in our local businesses, which would be ideal, not only for traffic congestion, but also then boost our local economy, keeping things local. So anytime anybody has any suggestions for us, please let us know.
I have one.
Okay, well, we could talk offline.
Could I just say, can we get an intern? It's a great intern project, if possible.
That's it, Mr. Murmish? That's it?
Yeah, we'll look into all these options. That's fine.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley has volunteered intern too for that.
He's got plenty of time. He only has three jobs now.
As soon as he gets his packet. As soon as I get a drop box.
Do you have something else, Alderman Jacob, under other business, or the same?
Yeah, and what Alderman R. Wesley had said, when we, if we do announce the grand openings, I mean, in our packets, we do get a list of new businesses. I think maybe we should announce that as well as the openings, I mean.
Well, we've created something in the newsletter now, trying to highlight businesses more already.
But I'm saying here.
And I know that's only once every two months, but.
I have to say, it might be nice to have it here.
They're going to come up with another plan.